Council will now come to order. Will you stand and join me for a moment of silence? I'll ask Councilman Webb to read this and I pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, and with your justly and justicely
Justice. Danielle, will you call the roll please?
Nadine Ophner.
Here.
Mr. Vickers.
Here.
Ms. Lillard.
Here.
Mr. White.
Here.
Mr. Pettit.
Here.
Mr. Sowers.
Here.
Mr. Webb.
Here.
All right, Steve, you want to take it?
I will try, sir. Let's see if I can figure out how to do the split screen thing. There we go. Yes, sir. First item for discussion tonight is the request from LDI to install veterans' banners, veterans' banners on the utility poles along Main Street. Brian has coordinated with SVEC and confirmed that we are limited to only a single banner at any given time on our poles, so that would limit us to about thirty banners that we could display at any given time. I did have a conversation with Jackie potentially about putting ground-mounted flags along the Greenway. She did think that there might be a concern about someone stealing them or vandalizing them. I did also offer that we might be able to place them in Dean Park so that they would be locked up at night to hopefully limit any of the potential for any sort of vandalism. She thought that that might be a good idea. She also said that she might look at exploring. She's seen in other locations where folks did either a wood block or a stone where the same information about a service member was placed so that they could be placed some other location. But the short answer, the short of this is, is that we want to continue to have this conversation to see if there is some form of recognition that the town can work with LDI and VFW so that we can have some, some display in the future.
So who, excuse me, so who limited just the single?
SVEC, the, the, we don't own the poles. They are owned by, by the Chicago Valley Electric Cooperative.
So how in Stanley do they have one?
We don't know.
As the same company? You know? That's weird.
We don't want to push it so that SVEC then keeps Stanley from doing something.
Right. Or any other locality. I mean, they've got Edinburgh, New York, I can't remember.
Stanley has a lot more poles too. They have poles on both sides of the street. They have telephone poles on one side and power poles on the other, so they have a lot more opportunities.
If I understand it right, it's the challenge that if this, these banners are different sizes, correct?
They are.
So they won't mount on the existing hardware of the town's banners, which are larger?
That is correct.
There's different companies that were, I'm, we're kind of exploring that have different sizes that might, that what the town has even.
And if that was the case, that was the other concern, was that if, if there are two different sized banners, we don't believe that we would be able, we would be permitted to keep both sets of mounting hardware.
Hardware, yeah.
So then it would, it would increase the amount of time with, with public works to go out, remove some of the hardware, put the new hardware on, put the different banners on. So it really doesn't appear that pole-mounted banners in the town will be a viable option. And so that's why we want to continue to work with VFW and LDI to identify some other mechanism.
What are the numbers we're talking about? How many would there be? Susan, you mind coming up to the podium because people complain they can't hear people in the audience talking?
My big mouth, you can't hear me.
Well, no, but yeah, we can, but people.
Joey's got a question as well, Mayor.
I'm sorry.
I'm not exactly sure how many we have in the county, but let me give you a little statistics I found out in this county. Um, hold on just a second.
Hey, Steve, I got an idea. Why can't we just display them at the ball field?
And, and that was.
On the stadium.
Okay.
That's, that's, that's also an option.
Probably all different kind of options. Um, it's interesting fact, in our county, the counties or the country's total veteran population, eleven point two percent are Virginians, and our county out of that nine point five percent are from Page County. That's kind of weird for this little county, but that goes all the way back. You know, so you're talking probably a lot, you know, if you go way back.
So are these are service people who have passed away or just passed away in?
Both.
In battle or?
Both. Passed away, current, active.
Oh, gosh.
Yeah, it's not just veterans before in war, it's all veterans.
So that's.
And eventually, I would even like to see if they could do banners for first responders to go up during that month, you know, that we recognize first responders. That would be, I have never seen that, but that would be cool to do as well, you know. But I'm not exactly sure how many we have, but there's, look at the paper when we do Veterans Day, how many are in that paper?
But those are countywide too, aren't they? I mean, we would only do.
So some would be.
We would only do town or which do?
Hey, well, Loray, Raleighville, you know, because I don't know, Stanley just does Stanley, don't they?
I don't know.
Yeah.
Joey, did you have a question?
Yes, I was wondering if there's been any vandalism with the graduate banners out at the singing tower. You know, like, because my mind immediately went to vandalism as well, but I was curious if there's been any vandalism out there. And I was in a different area, and there has been a history of vandalism on the Greenway versus the singing tower, but any insight on that?
We haven't had reports of it. Sometimes the wind gets them, I think they exalt that at first, when they first did it, it was vandalism, but I haven't had any official report of any, no age report.
Me either. I can see the Greenway.
It'll be Greenway maybe, but it'll not.
You would. But, um, the caverns would be an option too, I think.
That'd be very visible, yeah.
Yeah. And I think they would, you could do some in town.
I think I really favor the Greenway just because I think it seems like it would work well with like our existing maintenance and having people out there, and then so many people would see it, and you'd have a lot of freedom with how you place them and a lot of room.
I've got a different view on the Greenway though, just me personally, that, and we've got Ryan here with Parks and Rec, which I'm glad we're sharing this too. I'd like to see our Greenway Foundation also involved in the same discussion, but for me personally, I think the Greenway, and I've said this before, is a nature trail as far as the beauty of the creek, the vegetation, the trees. I think that anytime we place man-made items on the Greenway, regardless of what it is, I think we're taking away from the natural beauty of what the Greenway's intended to be, whether it's even wayward signage, whatever, as we add equipment pieces or whatever to it. And I go back to National Park, which I think I mentioned here before, is that, you know, the National Park is very restrictive. You can't erect things in the, you may have gone to the campground for fifty years and your family has a tradition of, but they're not going to let you put a monument up or any type of thing, even though it would mean something to you with that, you know, because of the, what it takes away from the natural setting. So for me personally, I'd like to see the Greenway stay a natural nature trail, not a, not something that we, and I don't mean this just with, but there's been other talks with, as far as signage or advertising, different things that go along with it, but do you agree, Ryan, with?
Well, my, my only two cents that I would put in there is that, so on the Greenway currently, we have like donated benches, we also have sponsored plaques, so I feel like those are still, I guess, small enough that we are able to preserve the natural beauty, but we still, we already have something kind of along those lines, so it may start to get.
Too much.
Busy and too much on the Greenway and then take away from that natural beauty. So, yeah.
I'm not opposed to the banners.
Oh, no, I understand.
Just the location of, you know, it's, yeah, what the Greenway is, but.
Because I could definitely see the ball field, but I feel like that would kind of limit the share of people that get to see them regularly, and that's the only concern there.
How many banners total would you think it would be?
I'd have.
We know we got thirty, right?
Yeah.
Start with thirty and if we get more, maybe if we can, we can find other places, maybe, you know, caverns or different places, I'm sure we could figure out, but maybe just start with thirty and see if we can fill that up, which we should be able to pretty easily, and then, um.
And if you give, give me the dimensions of the town flags that you use.
Jackie's got those because.
Does Jackie have them?
Purchased them.
Okay, because there's some.
Like multiple, like two veterans on each side, you know what I'm saying? I know it take away, but.
On what, your front and back?
Yeah, like D2s.
I know, I was.
You made it get four per pole?
I don't know.
Well, what about the veteran memorial that's on Court Street in front of the old courthouse? There's that whole, I mean, it's not a large area, but what I'm saying is there is a memorial, memorial, and they're also, on Veterans Day, Memorial's Day, there's usually a service or some type of recognition there. What about some of the poles or something like that along a block?
Of Court Street?
East and, or north and south of the memorial in that same area around the courthouse? And just as you've said, Chief, if it's, if it's a veteran on each side of the banner, and if two were able to be mounted on a pole, there's four on a pole, but, but I don't know, that's probably wood poles up through there, which I think that's what Stanley has in other places. A lot of these towns that I see have the veterans' banners. We travel out, we've seen that for years.
Yeah.
They're typically very small towns, and oftentimes it is wooden poles, not, not steel like poles like we have.
Yeah. I see New Markets had theirs on their light poles.
Yeah, theirs is on that fluted aluminum light pole.
Light poles on it, yeah, but I'm not sure about Edinburgh's, I can't remember.
And that's probably why those banners are smaller, because these type of light poles are so much closer to the ground.
Uh huh.
You don't have much room to mount a large banner because people would be, be running into.
But I've looked up some things and there's different, there's different sizes you can get.
But I just thought with a, with a county memorial already in place on Court Street at the courthouse, if somehow it was incorporated into the same area, since it's the same, same type of theme and recognition, but just a thought.
Right, okay.
Anybody else have anything for Susan? Susan, thank you as always for what you're doing for the veterans.
You too.
You do so much. Well, I know I don't, but you do so much, and we thank you for all that. We'll, we'll continue this discussion and maybe knock some different ideas around, and we'll, it's a wonderful thing to do.
Okay, and, and we'll, we'll continue to look up.
Okay.
Investigate a little bit more.
Thank you, Susan.
All right, thank you.
All right, Steve.
Yes, sir. Next item for council's consideration, Ryan Covage with our Parks and Rec has been investigating options to minimize bird issues underneath the West Main Street Bridge, and he's had a discussion with a contractor that has submitted a, a proposal that would install a netting system beneath the bridge. The two options in their proposal for approximately sixty-five hundred dollars, they could install netting along the west abutment and a portion of the bridge that would restrict bird access and minimize impact to the Greenway, and then for an additional twenty-five hundred dollars, they could continue that netting across the, the bridge in its entirety. There is a three, a ten-year manufacturer's warranty on the netting and a two-year installation warranty. Staff would propose bringing funding from both Parks and Rec and General Properties to assist with this. Brian did confirm that we were not able to use any of the town's B- allocation. For some reason, they, Richmond doesn't, doesn't believe that bird exclusion is, is an appropriate use of funding on, on the bridge. So Ryan is here, he's, he's been in direct conversation with the providers and can answer any questions at council meeting.
Council. Joey, Ron, anything?
No, Joey's got it.
Yeah, I just have, I just have a comment that I look at the pictures and I mean, it looks nearly invisible based on those, on what was provided, and if you go under there right now, it certainly is a blight. Like, we have this beautiful new bridge and the birds are just making a mess out of it, so I think it's a wonderful idea.
One thing if I may add, just comparing.
So just one, one thing to add really quickly, when you're looking at the scope of the project, comparing maybe, you know, doing one portion of the walkway versus the whole bridge. In my conversations with these contractors, so one of the things that they were really pointing out is that as we start to, you know, just focus on the walkway, the pigeons are going to continue to, to cause issues, right, all along kind of the gravel and the stone that we have right next to the walkway, so that will still be an issue, and then they'll be pushed out further, you know, along the bridge, which contributes a lot to the wear and tear of the bridge. You're realistically for, for the longevity of, of the bridge and, and maintenance as a whole, the twenty-five hundred dollars allows us to do the entire bridge, and then maintaining the requirement of having zippers installed near that abutment so that maintenance and inspections could still be conducted. Their, their professional recommendation was to do the entire bridge, which initially I was like, don't, don't upsell me, but after we spoke about it, I did feel like that was more than likely the, the best course of action that, that I would recommend, especially looking at the, the difference in cost. You know, I think it was, yeah, six thousand five hundred and forty-three dollars to do just the walkway and only an additional twenty-five hundred to do the entire bridge, so.
Do they, when they look at a project like this, do they account for where the pest might go after the action is taken? Because, and that's nitpicky, but I would hate to like, after this is installed, start getting calls from businesses along there that are like, we've got more pigeons than ever before because you kicked them out of it. I don't know.
No, that's, that's a good question, and that was something that we, we spoke about actually looking at one of our other bridges. My thoughts on that would be to address, this has been an ongoing issue for a while, so it would be great to solve the issue here at our West Main Bridge, and then if we discovered that they've, they've migrated or gone somewhere else, then that would be, especially if this goes well and is successful, then if they've migrated to another bridge, we may look at entertaining how to solve that issue in the future. But my thoughts would be initially to, to take, take this problem at its face and, and solve that one before looking at the next, but that's a great question.
Jason, you want to share your thoughts from earlier?
Well, just, when I saw this, and I haven't had time to speak with the gentleman, there was, there was a person that mentioned something about the pigeon problem to me six months ago or more, and they were familiar with some measures that were taken at Virginia Tech, which was some type of eradication of the, the birds themselves as far as clearing out, not just a deterrent to move them elsewhere, but what, and of course, all of it was done. I'm not sure of all the details, but I mean, everything was above board as far as what you can and can't do and however the cleanup was or whatever was done, but when I saw this, I was thinking I'd probably I'll just get some information from that person, or I could maybe, well, I don't know, we, we, I talked briefly with the town manager about it, and this still may be the best viable option, or we're thinking about it, it's just where it may go. As a fact, I'm not sure, so anyway.
No, and that's, that's a, that's a great point, and again, something good to think about, kind of that, that future thinking. My only concern with, you know, if you eradicate the pigeons now, my concern would, would be them coming back, and then you, you still don't have a deterrent, so you, you go through all that work and all that process of eradication, and then two years later, you're right back as where one, you know what I mean?
And I don't know how frequent or what measures they took there at Virginia Tech.
Right.
He was just saying it was a similar problem of a large scale, and he was familiar with how they had done it, but I don't have the details, but.
The other, the only other thing too I would make mention of is that it does seem to specifically be our West Main Street Bridge. I mean, we do have our, our other bridge with the train trussel there near Linden. We never have any issues with pigeons there, but again, this has been just such an issue for a long time, and all of our guys are consistently going out to, to work on this, and it's not the most fun job in the world. And we did try, you know, to Joey's point about putting up the bird spikes, which I think their pigeons are actually using as back scratchers now, they've gotten used to them, and they, they look atrocious under there, you know, there's these bright silver metal spikes under, under there, so this would be a bit more quaint and again, a, a long-term solution just to think about, but I'm certainly, if you have any ideas and want to send them my way, that'd be great, yeah, absolutely.
This seems like the best route for me, but.
Sure.
I didn't know if you wanted.
Well, the best part is you have the budget already for it, right?
Right.
Yes.
Right, I don't know what's involved in what Virginia Tech did.
Right.
Yeah, so, I mean, y'all think it's the best way to go, then it sounds good to me.
And a ten-year warranty, correct?
Yes, sir.
So we know that this investment's going to at least be good for ten years.
Correct.
Before we have any other expense.
Right.
That's good.
And I will say, and I'm sure you all saw in the packet, but when we met with the contractors, they also, I mean, they were basically saying this project would be one of their easiest ones. They were, you know, they do numerous jobs for federal buildings. They showed me like this large train trussel that they were working on, which I thought the Main Street Bridge was going to be a problem, and that looked like the whole other bag of worms. So these guys do this work very consistently and kind of all across the country, so I, I think for the price too, they're, they're definitely the best.
So Ryan, I guess you just kind of want our blessing on going ahead with this and trying it, or?
I think we'll include this on your July agenda just because.
Well, again, like I said, it's under budget, isn't it?
Well, it's not in our FY twenty-three budget, there, there will be funding in the FY twenty-four budget.
Four, okay.
Yes, sir, so, and because it is a permanent attachment to the bridge, I think we would want council's authorization for that.
Right. All right, thank you, it is a mess, I walk the Greenway quite a bit, and I know you are probably down there sweeping and power washing all the time, so it's, it certainly needs to be done.
Absolutely. And of course, if you all have any questions, just feel free to let me know.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
All right, Steve.
Yes, sir. Next item for council's discussion is the facility use policy. We became aware that the visitor center was being used after hours and there was limited oversight on its use, so working with the town attorney, we've developed a town policy regarding after hour, or regarding use that would prohibit after hour use of, of both the town hall and the council chambers unless one of town staff was in, in attendance or one of the tenants of the visitor center. The policy doesn't apply as far as after hours to the two tenants, LDI and the chamber at the visitor center, because they are tenants, they have access to the facility and they have the ability to lock it up and to put the alarm on after hours. So this is an effort to allow, to basically set what the expectations are of any group that would be using it. It would be limited to nonprofit entities, they would have to submit an application, describe what the, the request would be, provide a verification of their, their nonprofit status, and then provide a certificate of liability insurance that identifies the town as an additional insured for an amount of five hundred thousand dollars. There's also some specific rules, basically that you can't put anything on the walls of, of the building, you, you can't do any permanent improvements, if, if you move furniture and we, we don't want you to, it, it needs to be restored to its permanent place, things of that nature.
You know, thinking of our sign ordinance and the First Amendment issues we had there, would we run into the same issues with that, say, in for-profit versus nonprofit, or that's totally different?
It is.
Totally different thing?
It is totally different. The town attorney has confirmed that the town has the ability to limit the use of our properties to nonprofits.
Okay.
Would this impact the chamber's ability to allow their members to use that room that don't fit within that parameter that we've identified here?
If they are, if, if the chamber is the individual that's applying for use and they allow their, their, their member, I believe that because they are a tenant at the visitor center, they, they could make use of the visitor center so long as there is an employee of the chamber there during the event, during the use.
Has that discussion been had with the chamber staff?
They are aware that the, the main concern was after hour use when there was no representative, and, and they, they understood the, the town's concern and our insurance provider's concern that we are opening ourselves up to potential issues by not having representatives of, of any of those entities there when an after hour event would occur.
Thank you.
Any other thoughts? So Steve, do we need to approve this, or?
Yes, sir, this would be a policy for, for consideration at your July meeting.
All right. I have no other questions on this, let's move on to short-term rental discussion. Steve?
Yes, sir. Council had, had requested an update on the number of short-term rentals that were located in the town. We have developed a summary both by type and within the zoning district and developed some mapping along those lines and are giving the council the opportunity to discuss any potential changes to our zoning ordinance or any concerns that you all might have as far as where and how many special use permits or short-term rentals have been developed within the town.
I guess I should. I guess I should add some context to the kind of thoughts that I circulated to members of council. Just kind of takeaways from having talked to, you know, Mr. Crispin, having talked to Jackie at LDI, some citizens in the community, Page One. I'm also finding out today that some members of the planning commission would like to see a little more action and clarity on the zoning around short term rentals. So where I landed was something that I think is a a good compromise that addresses some of the concerns that people had about neighborhood character, the effect on, you know, supply of housing and therefore affordability, while also, you know, not severely arresting the market such that we're not getting the benefits, which many town council members have pointed out, in places where this feels appropriate. And my thought on how to do that was to just take our high high density zoning districts and sort of reaffirm our commitment to the nature of those as affordable family places by doing this. I didn't get into PNDs because that just feels like a whole other level of complication. And of course, you got to think about the one behind Walmart and everything there. I just felt like that was a whole other can of worms. So that's where I'm at. Of course, the ones in the current districts, if we did make a change, they would be able to continue to operate. And then new ones could continue to be established in the districts that we thought it was appropriate in and wanted to continue keeping that. So you're not creating an undue hardship on the people that have made this investment. And then something that I did not include, which Mr. Burke kind of mentioned earlier, is you could actually, you know, have an exemption that says that if a house unit had sat vacant for a certain number of years, that it would then be eligible for the SUP even if we otherwise did not allow short term rentals by SUP in that zoning district. And I feel like that addresses what I think has been the best argument in favor, which is that many of these units did sit vacant, were decrepit, and were restored and actually brought to use again. So I think if you, if we did something and then included something like that, that would address all the, you know, concerns people have brought. But it's just a thought, a lot of details would have to get worked out. It also could be a terrible idea, so I'm curious to hear what others think.
Counselor, any thoughts?
I mean, we have 50 units, short term. Well, not the same Counton Hotel, we got about 30, I mean, yeah, less than 50. We've got 2,200 units in the town. We've already issued a bunch of special use permits or at least several for R4, Boomfield area. I just think you have a hard time telling people, you know, we've issued everyone else, but you know, we're, I mean, I think it's kind of has stabilized some. I mean, I would just be in favor, honestly, just keeping it as it is. I don't think we're going to see a lot more. It's like I said, it kind of has stabilized. It'll saturate a little bit. Some of the people who run it are kind of seeing lower rates now, so maybe it'll naturally just sort of decline a little bit. But that would kind of be my recommendation. They could have a hard time, someone came along, would do exactly the same thing that we approved a dozen other people to do, to say no, but.
And there was another alternative that you had named that I think the town attorney had mentioned, which is looking at the lot sizes that the unit's actually on. So maybe you would just have your short term rentals at the places that have a significant buffer between them and the rest of the neighborhood. I would say your units that are on larger lots are probably not going to tend to be the entry level housing that you want to be accessible to people. So that might be another thing that would address things without, like you said, you know, turning away people for something that maybe the previous month was allowed. But you can say, well, actually, you just don't fit these lot requirements that we've instituted. So lots of options in the toolkit, I think.
All right, anybody else?
Well, if if council does desire, this is something that would, you could refer to the planning commission to 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 explore. And if if council does desire, please let the mayor know, and we could possibly include that as on your July agenda for an item to refer to the planning commission.
Alex, thanks for your work with this.
Yeah, it's like you said, it's it's good to learn details, but I think it's, you know, yeah, there's, and of course, we had to comment, some people say we're getting too many, but I'm not really sure. Well, it's good, good thing to discuss, and we haven't really, I think, gotten into it deep enough before. So so let me know if y'all want to put it on the agenda for July. And the first step would be refer to the planning commission, is that right, Steve?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I mean, I I think if if it's not something that totally rubs council the wrong way, I would love to see what the planning commission comes to after a discussion. And also, maybe staff could look at some of these different options that you've named and see what an ordinance would look like. And I know Mr. Crispin's interested in that conversation, so everybody, could be a lot of hands on it to make it happen, but just to see the options that we have.
Yeah, thank you, Alex. A lot of, a lot of good work in it. Thank you. All right, on the water meter financing.
Yes, sir. This is just an information item for council. We've been discussing the upgrade to the SCADA, and part of that is the financing of a portion of the of the equipment and installation costs. We are, we have scheduled and advertised a public public hearing for your July meeting for council's consideration of the bank loan with Blue Ridge Bank to fund both this and a portion of the water plant SCADA.
Do you have any thoughts on that? Ryan, how many meters do we have? How many are we still waiting for?
We don't know, large meters, anything three quarters and an ounce above. We received 2,200. We have about another 250 roughly that we're waiting on. The larger ones are the more expensive ones, and we're looking at July or August. The contractor is expedited from Strasburg, which is their current project. Looks like they're going to be here in the third quarter, first or fourth quarter this year instead of January, February, is what we were originally looking at. So they may be here a little sooner, pushes us along a little faster, but it'd be nice to get that done. But I think I was interested to see, I was happy to see that Blue Ridge actually lowered the rate a little bit on the money. It was five point something, now it's down to 4.875. So always a good, you know, thing to borrow locally when we can. And this project will be paid for a significant portion of it with ARPA, but the rest of it will be covered by this financing. And of course, then the rest of the money will go toward SCADA, you know, at the water plant, which we've also talked about.
And we're working on the what, the 40 or 50 we had that were kind of unusual situations? We had to, you know, what, change meter? What we're doing there? Separate meters or something like that?
Yeah, we're down to about 15 that we need to work on. So Lynn and Pat have been working religiously to get a lot of those taken care of. We've done some improvements and handled some issues that probably need to be handled 50 years ago when they were initially installed. But now we're taking the opportunity to get those done. And by doing those in advance, we're just saving money and time on the back end by having the contractor do those problem jobs. We can do them cheaper and better and faster. So we're had good cooperation so far from homeowners and business owners, so very happy about that. And we're doing what we can to help out to get them done.
Good. Thank you.
So far, we're we're getting close. We should be done by end of July, I hope. Thank you, Mayor.
All right. I guess the SCADA update, Steve?
Yes, sir. Wanted to give council an update on where we are with the the water plant SCADA. During the the bid process that began in in April, we were notified, Joey was notified that Paul was going to remove itself as a contractor for consideration, but would exclude any contractor to to do certain components of the project due to the the need to access the software that they are the sole provider for. This has resulted in further addendums to the project. Joey's been working to to notify all of the potential bidders of what the scope will be now that we've got a pretty firm idea from Paul what their work will be and what will remain for the contractors. And we are anticipating bid proposals from those contractors this Thursday.
Any thoughts on that from anybody? Any questions for Joey? He's here tonight. Joey, thank you for being here tonight. We appreciate it. Thank you. I guess we'll wait until the 29th and see what happens. All right, let's move on. Community survey results. I guess, Steve?
Yes, sir. We wanted to give council the opportunity to see all the 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 survey results that were received from our 2013 survey. In general, things were, we've received fairly positive responses regarding the services that we provide to our citizens. As usual, there were a number of items that the the respondents were, found that we needed some room for improvement. A lot of those were typically areas outside of our control, trying to attract additional shopping, restaurants, healthcare, education, things of that nature. But in general, I'm very pleased with the the responses that we've received related to people's concerns about the appearance, public safety, our parks and rec systems. In in general, all of those received very favorable responses. And so we only had 136 people that responded to the survey, which isn't a lot, but again, it it gives us a hopefully a good indication of where we're we're sitting. I would note that a number of the respondents appear to be residents of Page County and not the town and have a little bit of difficulty in understanding what services the town provides and what we don't provide to those that are located outside of of the town limits.
So any thoughts on the survey? Thought overall, I thought it was very favorable. I know there's always some comments that aren't.
And there's always room for improvement.
And there always is. We never, we never rest, yes, we keep moving forward. But yeah, I think, like you say, most of them, most of them people just didn't understand what what we provide and what we don't provide, what we can or can't affect. Anybody else?
We did not approve any water parks in the town of Lou Ray. I promise.
Yeah, that was, that was probably my favorite, yes.
I remember sitting at one of the polling location, someone said, I'm going to, I'm going to vote for you. I said, no, you live in Raleighville. Like, oh, okay.
But I will say one thing, and the mayor and I actually were able to have a conversation at the the fish fry about, even though this would maybe create extra work and be an unnecessary step, I was just thinking, could there be ways to make this more, you know, scientific slash representative? Because I think the thing with surveys is, I mean, we clearly got some people that identify themselves as not living in the town limits. And then you also probably have a survey where people are going to self select for negative axe to grind, you know? Maybe somebody owns a certain store and says, we need more people to shop at stores like this. Like, I just don't know if there's any way, whether it's focus grouping or, you know, getting demographic information from people to cut things up, if there's a way to create a more representative pool. Because you don't want to just go for the squeaky wheel. You want to say, you know, what captures public opinion generally?
Unfortunately, well, the the.
But that's hard to do.
Unfortunately, it's a multi-page survey, so it won't, it it, we we simply can't include it in our utility bill.
Yeah.
We could pare it down and include that, and and that might increase the number of responses that we would get specifically from our residents. The other option would be to just do a direct mail to all of our utility customers. With the current rate of of billing, of of postage being 60 cents and we have 2,300 utility accounts, it would be, it would be an investment. If if council deemed it worth it, we absolutely could do that. And and that probably is a good discussion for this time next year or May, April, May, when we're getting ready to put that out. If if council wants to make an investment, we can definitely make that happen. I don't know that it would necessarily guarantee that everyone that received it would return it, but that would be a a way of getting in front of all of our our residents to say, hey, we really do want your opinion.
And I mean, it's a lot, you know? Some of the big survey companies that do public opinion polling change stuff every year because it's so hard to get it. So I mean, it's a lot. Appreciate you're putting this together and making this happen.
Any else on the survey? Any other thoughts? All right. Everybody, counsel, everything else you want to bring up? So coming events, we have the Stanley Homecoming Parade Saturday. Chief and I, and I guess, I'm sure Rod is going, is he going to be back?
He's offline.
Can we ask him?
He's offline.
Oh, he's gone? Okay.
He said earlier, he's back.
Okay. And we still have some seats available, right? If anybody else wants to go. Then we have Flotsies Monday, the 3rd, 10 o'clock.
10 o'clock.
Of course, we have the picnic. Daniel, how we doing on the count on that?
Just reach out and let me know if if you do plan to attend.
What day is that?
We'll have plenty, but just let me know.
So I talked with Leroy Friday. He said he was on, he was ordering, he was on board with ordering, and he's supposed to be taking care of that. He's done, he's talked with you, okay?
Yes.
And then July 10th, we have Steel Valley, which is a new fitness center. That's at 10 o'clock as well, I believe?
Yes, sir.
And I will have to, if the vice mayor's back, I will have to get him to speak. I am working that day. And if not, I'll have to ask someone else. Hopefully, they let him out of Japan and they'll let him back here. I think that's all. Anybody else have anything? All right. Y'all have a happy and safe Fourth of July. We adjourned.